Welcome to Beyond the Front Door Podcast with Lindy and Ria at Peak Properties. We are real estate agents in Cheyenne, Wyoming, and we bring you stories that make you laugh, cry, cringe, and inform you. Come on in, we put the real in real estate.
I need to start over.
Yeah, welcome.
Yeah, welcome to.
To Beyond the Front Door Podcast.
I'm like, I got a million other things on my mind today.
She's gonna forget the Suba thing here in a minute, just so you guys know, she's gonna ask.
That's why you brought me, it's okay.
So, as many of our listeners know, April is our sort of thirty thousand foot view of builders and affordable housing here in Cheyenne, Wyoming. And we are doing this as part of a partnership between Beyond the Front Door Podcast and Southeast Wyoming Builders Association. It's a good thing I have the acronym in my head, so I can get that right. Anyway, so I would like to introduce our guest here today, who is Gunner Mom with the Laramie, Laramie County Commissioners. Do I just need to restart this whole thing all over again? I almost said Campbell County.
He'd be like, Campbell County? No, thank you.
The only one I like up there is Ford, so Jim Ford's a really good guy.
Yeah, 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 yeah. All right, one more time. So sorry, you're gonna have to edit this.
No, it's okay, let's start over.
All right.
Unless Sam wants to do it.
I got it.
I mean, I'm happy to, but it's your show.
I know, I go, hey, I'm gonna throw this at Sam.
Yeah, okay, so, welcome everybody, welcome. This, as everybody is probably aware by now, April is our affordable housing and builders series here on Beyond the Front Door Podcast, and this is a partnership between Lindy and I with Beyond the Front Door Podcast and the Southeast Wyoming Builders Association, Sam Weinstein. So, thank you, Sam, as always, for partnering with us on this series.
I'm so excited to say it's good to be back.
Yes, yeah, for a whole month, actually.
I know, I know, we're gonna see each other a lot. You guys are gonna get sick of hearing my voice, if you're not already.
No, they're not. And our guest today is Gunner Mom from the Laramie County Commissioners, and so we just wanna say thank you.
Yeah, thank you guys very much for having me on.
Of course. So, what we typically start off doing is have you just give us a brief rundown, I guess, of you, like, how long you've lived in Cheyenne, where you came from, if you moved here, your career trajectory.
Who is Gunner Mom?
Yeah.
Who is Gunner Mom?
Yeah, and.
He's pretty much, everyone knows him.
Yeah, this is gonna be old news for everybody, but let's go ahead and rehash it, maybe I don't know all of it just yet, so.
Yeah, so.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Gunner Mom, sixth generation Laramie County resident. My family moved here from Sweden in about eighteen eighty-six and settled out by Alben. So, I'm the first generation to not grow up on a farm or a ranch, which I always joke is good because my body type is more suited for real estate and golf than it is for bucking, for bucking bales, and my allergies keep me from farming. But, I know, so, the other half of my family was involved in banking and real estate, and ultimately, I've always been very interested in politics as well, and so I got into real estate after college. I'm the managing broker of a firm in town, and through a course of events, always very involved through the Realtor Association with the political action kind of side of things, and knew there'd be a time in my life that I would wanted to serve and wanted to run. And six years ago, there became an opportunity that I saw with the county commission of a potential opening. And so I threw my name in the hat and ran a campaign and was successful in that, and in the middle of my second term. I think the commission job really plays well with the background in real estate, because it's a lot of land use issues kind of things. And so I think the background that I brought there has been advantageous to the county and to my role as a commissioner.
That makes a lot of sense.
I agree, yeah.
I was thinking, the one thing I didn't realize until I became involved with the Wyoming Association of Sheriffs and Chiefs of Police is how much land issues are an issue, and livestock issues, by the way, since we're talking about farming. Land and livestock issues, you just have no idea. I don't think the general public does necessarily, especially on livestock. How much livestock crime is a thing?
I have no idea.
Yeah.
So, no, the general public doesn't know.
No.
I barely know what livestock is, so.
Um, I don't either. I went to a listing and he said he had livestock, and in my head I went to cows.
Sure.
And it was peacocks.
That's the same.
And he called them that, and I'm like, are peacocks livestock? Okay.
I, a lot of people have them. I hear they're very aggressive and they're good.
Yeah, he wouldn't let me go near them.
Protectors of, did your family have peacocks?
No, no peacocks.
Dang.
I think that's a later addition to the agricultural world of Southeast Laramie County. Uh, but funny quick story about agriculture and real estate and its interplay. One of the first issues we dealt with when I was Public Policy Chair for the State of Wyoming for the Realtors Association was to designate yaks as a potential feral animal. So you typically think feral animals are dogs and cats. Um, well, in Buffalo, above Buffalo and the Big Horns, a large landowner came in, or somebody came in and purchased a large tract of land that was historically recreational land. Uh, and because they wanted to get the ag exemption, they needed to put some sort of livestock on there, but they also had no acumen for husbandry or raising livestock, and yaks are hardy and they don't require a whole lot. And so they just released about fifty yaks up on the Big Horn Mountains on their parcel of land. Well, yaks also will run through fences without even thinking about it, and so these yaks would just move as they ate and move through adjacent landowners' land, and there was nothing you could do because they were categorized as livestock.
Interesting.
So we had to have a state law change to add yaks to the list of feral animals, so if they're outside of the property where they're supposed to be, you can legally dispatch them and get rid of them because they are a feral animal, so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
That is.
Why is it the second I hear yak ranch, I think of Jeffree Star? I don't know, I mean, it's just a thing you.
I just love that every time I listen to this, or I'm on here, there's some random factoid that I never knew. And now I will, now it'll, it'll, it'll come up at like Blue Raven or Black Tooth trivia, and I'll be like, Gunner told me about the yak, and now I know about the yak.
Dogs and yaks in the state of Wyoming are feral animals.
Yaks.
Oh, interesting. Well, uh, okay.
Fair housing.
So where do we go from here?
I don't know how to transition this. But, um, as part of this series, we are, you know, of course, having some discussion. As we all know, there's a shortage of housing, I mean, across the country, but Cheyenne is no different, and the state of Wyoming is no different. And so, um, our goal with this podcast or with this series through April here is just to kind of give that thirty thousand foot view of what everybody is doing to, what everybody is noticing about the lack of affordable housing, um, and what the facts are around that. And then what each entity is kind of doing, so everybody is working together to try to make housing available to everyone. And so, with today being sort of about Laramie County, I guess, Gunner, I guess I would just turn the floor over to you in terms of what are your thoughts about when, uh, maybe sort of a timeline of when this started to take place, which I think was maybe during the pandemic, maybe I'm guessing, I have no idea, but, yeah, I just wanna turn it over to you.
Yeah, no, I think we definitely saw an influx of people, and I think all of us being involved in the real estate world saw that and saw prices rise, and so we've kind of, we're on a trajectory of a normal appreciation pattern that Laramie County has always kind of seen, even through the Great Recession in oh seven, oh eight, we just were flat, we didn't see a drop in prices. Uh, but we saw a real skyrocketing of values, um, and that's, I think, the difference is, is there is value there, right? It is, it is expensive, there is a price associated, and we can say that, that, but there is a value associated with it that, that people are gaining, um, by these appreciation and prices. So we, we really started to see an exacerbation of the problem, uh, probably post-pandemic. But I would tell you that, uh, it is a problem of our own making, and it's because we've been successful in other areas, right? As a community, we've always invested in ourselves, uh, with economic development, with the work that Leeds has done, with other community partners, the Chamber, all of those things, and our ability to attract and promote business here locally has honestly then come back to hurt us a little bit, because we don't have some of the other pieces you need to have sustained long-term growth, um, as it relates to housing.
So I'm gonna interject here, um, because I really wanna know what those other pieces are. I, um, this is always a sensitive subject in our community when we talk about wants versus needs, and we talk about amenities and things. So, your comment you just made, what are those other things that our community may be lacking or needs to work on?
Yeah, so I think it, there's, it's twofold, right? There are, is the amenities piece and what it takes for a company and their workers to want to be here. But I think it's also our ability to provide a workforce internally, and so we have made great strides. And again, our community chose to invest in itself, like with the last six penny ballot. They elected to tax themselves for three and a half million dollars, I believe, for L triple C to develop an advanced manufacturing center. So we could get advanced manufacturing technicians in our community, trained and ready for the workforce. And so, uh, it's an overall workforce piece, but yeah, there is the component of, uh, I mean, we've talked, a rec center, like, right?
He points at me because I was, it's like.
Laramie County doesn't have a rec center, and I've been part of all three ballots where it has come up and failed. None of them as an elected official, every time as a citizen. I remember distinctly the very first time watching in First Interstate Bank's lobby as that first group tried to get it over the finish line and seeing it, uh, fail. Um, I'll tell you, as an elected official, there is fifty percent of the population that tells me that if I put a rec center on a ballot, they will never vote for me again, and then there's fifty percent of the population that says if I do not put a rec center on the ballot, they will never vote for me again, um, which is a whole nother thing. I don't think I should make any decision based upon if I will get elected or not. That's not really my kind of.
But people like to say that.
Yeah, and people like to say that, and I mean, the reality is that they won't, but we were, you know, we were two hundred votes shy last time it came up.
That's pretty narrow.
Yeah, and I, I truly believe, and I think this is how it's worked in other communities, is we have amazing sports programs across a variety of sports, tons of parents, but there's an apathy when it comes to voting. And I think that there, it's very easy, and I think it would pass overwhelmingly if, say, the morning of the election, there was a phone tree and every coach called the parents on their team and said, remember to go vote today.
Sure.
Or, you know, just kind of a down-the-line thing like that. Two hundred votes is not that many to make up in a community of a hundred thousand people.
Well, and people, we talk about this all the time, but people think that their vote doesn't count or it doesn't matter, and that's, and, and there's no, there's no place that it, that can't be more not true than in Wyoming. We really have the ability to have an impact with our vote.
I don't even think it's just Wyoming. I, I, I think the sentiment that people's vote don't matter, they, they connect that to national elections.
Yes.
And yeah, my vote in the state of Wyoming does not matter, and we all know that.
We're right.
That's why it's always so important that people vote locally. I don't even care if you live in, in Los Angeles, or New York, or Miami. You're voting on county commissioners, you're voting on councilmen and women, you're voting on perhaps sheriffs or any other elected official, those, those are the ones that really matter. And I don't wanna get really off track here with local versus national, but because you're here locally, I'd like your perspective on that apathy of, everyone assumes nationally my vote doesn't count, so why would I vote on anything else? And how do we flip that script so people go to the ballot box focused on their home community first?
Well, I think it does segue well into the conversation about affordable housing and how we get there, right? We've seen local elections have an impact on affordable housing projects or just housing projects in the city of Cheyenne. And I know if you've ever been to a home builders meeting, you see me pick on the city constantly, but it's because it's easy. But the, the fact of the matter is, in the county, how I believe we're different, is we have a set of rules. And if you meet our rules, we do not believe that it is in the government's, it, it, we do not believe it's the government's role to tell you no. Even if a neighbor says that they don't like it.
Yep.
Right? And I think there's a different mentality in other governing bodies, and a more populist feeling of, well, ten people emailed us. And so, you know, and the not in my backyard thing is a real stickler when it comes to, uh, having any progress in the affordable housing or expansion of housing, new types of housing, new ways of thinking of things. That is the biggest hurdle, I believe, uh, to those things occurring in our community is changing that mindset of folks, of, of what affordable housing is, right? Affordable housing in Laramie County, the, some of the projects in the city of Cheyenne that have been built, um, they are income restricted. But that income, those are first and second year, uh, police department folks, those are first and second year firefighters, those are nurses. Those are, you know, these aren't, um, these are people that you need in your community and you rely upon at your worst moments. And you're gonna say you don't want them living next to you because it has the word affordable housing attached to it. And that's just an unfortunate, uh, thing that is societal, and I don't know the answer except for continuing to talk about it.
I think it's education, you know, this was, um, it's a very sensitive topic for me, and I get very frustrated. All of us that sit around the table, we're very fortunate, and I think we discussed it the last time we were here, we're very fortunate, but um, all it takes is for you to step back and realize that I don't understand the life of somebody else. You know, I, I don't know what that means. Um, you know, I recall a conversation I had recently, um, and, and the words, people choose to not buy houses and people choose to be poor came up in conversation, and, um, I think that right there is the impetus for why we have to have these conversations. Because it's, it's really frustrating when we look at the lowest economic bracket within Laramie County. And we have this idea that they've done this to themselves, they chose to live this way, and all you gotta do is strap up your boots and you're gonna be fine, and, and there's a real disconnect in the reality of the life that people live. Um, and you just have to acknowledge that we don't get it. I mean, I don't get it. I'm fortunate enough to not get it. But I'm also self-aware enough to know that it doesn't help me to can, to keep these people from buying homes. I need these people to buy homes. I'm not even an agent or a lender anymore. I need them to buy homes because that, that development brings, brings density, which brings dollars, which brings other, other companies, and it's, it's only gonna further help it if we, I think, focus on that affordable housing side.
Yeah.
Well, there's something very, I actually been, um, this is something I've been working on this week is when you have a young family that, um, needs to be able to purchase their own little home to raise their family in, or to at least make that first step. And when you walk through home after home, and it is, um, you know, you can tell that they want better for themselves, right? Like, you know, and a lot of homes, let's just say in the two hundred thousand range here in Cheyenne are older or fixer-uppers, or, you know, that sort of thing. And so, and then, then there's only very few to choose from, and so when you're taking a young family out to look at homes, then it becomes, um, uh, how do you wanna say, then they start to decide where they can make the sacrifice and where they can't. Now, I will tell you, and I've said this to my kids too, is that everybody has to start somewhere. Everybody has to, you know, we all start off with our, that, um, first time home. And you make the updates and you do the things that you gotta do. Um, but what we ultimately want is to make, you know, just like you're saying, it, it isn't even about it just, you know, being affordable, it's about, it is, it is about it being affordable. But we have to, like you said, remove the stigma of, um.
What affordable housing is.
Looks like, that's right.
Well, I think there's two different conversations. I mean, I think there's affordable housing, and then there's making housing more affordable. And those are, at least from my perspective, very different conversations. I think there's affordable housing that could be specifically built or managed for a certain socio-economic status, but then there's making housing more affordable, which is done through policy reduction or legislation, or, um, even just the advent of new materials and new, new building supplies or things like that.
That's a great point.
Yeah.
And I think that's where, as a government official, and especially in Wyoming, um, that has very few options for a local government revenue, where we see that we can have an impact in the housing kind of play, is we can't subsidize any housing, right?
Right.
That, that just isn't, it isn't a feasible thing. But what we can do, and especially, uh, through policy, in Laramie County, we don't have the, you know, rural, essentially. We don't have the ability to do, do the density that's needed to, to lower prices and make it affordable, um.
Right.
Housing. But what we can do is, I believe nationally, it's twenty-four to twenty-six percent of home cost is tied up in, uh, permits, fees, all of those kinds of things, and we can try and either reduce those as much as possible to still cover our costs, but also be as efficient with time as possible, because time is the most expensive piece of a transaction for an investor that's building or a builder or anything like that. And so, uh, while we have these rules, uh, like I said, we have these rules, so if somebody comes to us, they meet our rules, then we have to work with them through the process to quickly execute what they wanna do. And there will be, you know, things that go awry, or mistakes, or anything like that. And the directive from the current county commission to staff is to get to yes, right?
That's wonderful.
Is we want to make projects happen, um, and, you know, there is a way even utilizing rules and having a strict framework of how things should operate to get things accomplished. And, and I think that starts at the top down and goes back to the, um, first part of the conversation is electing people that give that same directive. Right? And, and, and then trusting their staff to do it and do it in a way that still keeps consumers safe, the community safe, all of those things, but are willing to, um, empower people to, to get to yes. And, and I think that's what, in Laramie County, I am very proud of the work we've done to, to do that.
And I'll say that as I've worked with, um, buyers that have moved here from out of Colorado, I think they're very appreciative that the process here in Cheyenne is as timely as it is because I, I, I think I hear it from every single one of them that whenever they went, and, and, and I know you're talking from a builder perspective, but even from a homeowner perspective that wants to make a change or an upgrade to their home, or whatever the case is, it, down south of us, it could take six months or longer, like you just listen to them.
We were just told.
The time intensity.
We were told last night, um, by the second chair of NAHB, Bob Peterson, who lives down in Colorado, came up to our Suba meeting, um, stated that it can take up to twelve weeks in Colorado to get a permit for new construction. Um, which, again, I, it, it is so much different than the way that it is here, but I would imagine that that twelve weeks is, is probably standard for them.
Yeah, we have seven to ten days.
Right.
If it is outside of ten days, there better be a really good reason why that permit has not been issued, and we get a list every month that are update. Um, and we go through them, and yeah, there's outliers, and a lot of times that is on, you know, the, both parties have a responsibility, right? So sometimes the homeowner, the contractor hasn't gotten the requisite information, um, for the county department to move forward. But by and large, our permit times are, you know, seven to ten days from application to issuance, which I think is very.
Timely.
Yeah, very good.
I have a, I have a question that's very personal, if you guys don't mind. Um, I'm, I'm curious what rules or regulations are, are in place, or if there's any other land around in the south side or in the county to put up multifamily. Um, back in the day, I'm very open about this, I lived in a fourplex off of Fox Farm. Um, I would call that affordable housing because of the amount I was paying, where I was living, the amount of density that was surrounding me. And I think that that neighborhood is phenomenal, I absolutely loved it there, and it was, it was perfect for what I needed it for, for a year and a half. Um, I love it, I think they're beautiful construction. I go down Avenue C and there's the wonderful giant apartment complex off of that. I'm wondering if there's ability for more of those type of projects within county pockets, because I know we have a few county pockets, South Cheyenne.
Yeah, so, there, there are, but they are able to exist because of South Side Water and Sewer, right? Because they tie into, uh, an actual water and sewer system. And, and so you're able to do that, and we're, through our zoning changes that have been, um, hotly discussed throughout the community, through some changes that we've made based upon public feedback, because that's what we try and do. Uh, we, I think are gonna be able to increase some density there on the south side, that'll potentially allow for something like that. The tough thing is, is when you get out into the county, uh, because of what we utilize to protect the aquifer and our water system, we just don't have the ability to do the density that it really makes sense. Uh, but if you're connected to a water and sewer system like South Side Water and Sewer, I think there is the possibility for more growth in that area of town.
I think it's, I, and we talk about, you know, the everyday person knowing things, right? Like, I don't, I think that, um, for most people, my guess is that you look out across the landscape and think we have all this land, it should be so easy, right? But it's not, it's complex, there's a lot of moving parts that go into make, you know, providing additional housing.
Well, there's a lot of land, but all of it's either owned or it's federal, you know?
Yep.
Um, years ago, in my prior life, I was, uh, president of the Wyoming Mortgage Lenders Association, and we had a conference up in Cody, and I remember, I forget the, um, the woman's name, but she was a representative from Freddie Mac, and she flew into Cody, and she starts speaking, she goes, man, it was just so wonderful to fly over your state and look at all this open land that you have, and she just got a room full of laughter, because people just don't understand that we don't, we have land, but we don't, we don't have land.
Right.
You know, I don't know how to state that in the most politically correct, we don't have land.
Yeah, so I think it's ninety-eight percent of Teton County is owned by the federal government or state government.
That makes sense to me a little bit.
So, uh, and then you take out some other conservation easements and stuff, and it's under one percent of the land in Teton County is actually buildable. So you wanna talk about, yeah, I know, it's an anomaly.
It is.
So, but to the point of federal land and usage, Laramie County doesn't have a ton. Um, we have the Air Force Base, and then we have very limited BLM land. Uh, but the, the new administration in DC has made an executive order to utilize federal land for affordable housing.
Oh.
So for us, it doesn't really make sense, um, because we, we just don't have that ability. But in somewhere like Jackson Hole or Teton County, um, I think that can work. As a resident of the United States of America, I hope they are very kind of focused on how they release that land for use, because it's all of our land at this table and everybody watching.
Yep.
And I just fear, um, nefarious actions that would gain control of federal land by people not seeking to solve the problem of affordable housing.
Sure.
So. But the state, so, but this, so to bring it back, so the state of Wyoming through, I was on the Regulatory Reduction Task Course for the state. And one of the things that we worked on that didn't make it, um, through was to be able to utilize state land for affordable housing. So, in our community, this does make sense. There is a parcel just north of North Park, um, in North Cheyenne, where water and sewer are present, and there is a, a large section of land. But then you come to the next piece, which is state has hesitated of giving leases longer than fifty to seventy-five years um, for that kind of purp, or for, on those lands. Well, we know that financing on projects takes a lease of a longer term for a bank to be able to lend on it. And so we worked on trying to expand what was an acceptable lease to the state of Wyoming in a lease term that would let us get financing on something like that and build a project on underutilized land. So, I think, you know, we made inroads, I think we will continue to, I think everybody recognizes it's a problem. Um, it's not just a problem in our community or Teton County, it is across the state, and I, so I think that we will get somewhere. It's just the pace of government isn't always as quickly as it needs to occur.
So, I guess, back to, you know, whether it's sewer and water, whether it's land availability, whether it's financing, these are all things that play into the decisions that are being made around how to provide additional housing in Cheyenne.
And I think that that's the frustrating part, um, you know, we keep talk, we just keep talking about the average person or the, the general individual, and I, there's so much that goes into it, how are you ever supposed to know?
No.
You know, um, and I think that we try our hardest, we have, I mean, good elected officials who speak openly about what, what is happening here locally. But, um, I don't, I know Suba works on the education and advocacy, trying to just spread awareness of what is going on. But it's such a delicate, yet complex issue that it's really hard to get across to, to the voting base how intricate everything is, how everything that you vote for is interconnected to everything else. Um, I don't know where I'm going with that comment, I'm just, just stating things.
It's not as simple, it's not simple.
No, and there's never one fix, and it's never gonna be one organization or one elected official that's gonna make the difference. It takes, it takes a cohort of people working towards that same goal. Um, you could say the silver lining in any quote crisis is it spurs action.
And creates.
Granted, slower than we want it to be, but it, it at least creates those conversations, um, and to your point, yeah, I think affordable housing has probably always been a conversation, but specifically in the last five, six years, just, I mean, the world, the world economy has changed, you know, the American economy and landscape has changed, so many things have changed. Um, and we need to make sure that when we are discussing the problems we have currently, that we're discussing, I don't know how to word this, we need to make sure that we're living in reality of what's actually happening with affordable housing and understanding, you brought up earlier that we were on the right trajectory for appraisals. We're on the right trajectory because there's still value there, the same way that I know we're upset about our higher interest rates. We are exactly where we should be. If you were to tie the dot from pre-COVID to post-COVID, I mean, it lines up perfectly. We had a blip in COVID, but our rates right now are, are market rate, it is above what we are used to. But that's, it's not coming back, and I, and I don't know how, now that I'm out of it, how do you guys talk to your clients about this idea that we can't start? Idea that we can't start, we can't think that it's ever going to come back. We're not going to get these two percents. We're not going to get affordable rates. You know, this isn't going to happen. A lot of things have changed. You know, how do you have that conversation with folks?
Well, the hard thing is, so I I hear people talk about this all the time because you have the boomer generation that's like, I bought a house for. You know, thirty thousand dollars and twenty percent interest. Well, uh.
It only took fifteen or twenty percent of their income to do so.
Right, and you're talking a much lower, you know, the the cost of everything was scaled down during that time compared to now. So. You know, the and and it's evident that this is an issue because now what's happening, and I I see this all the time, is I'm either showing property. Or doing open houses, like we have a home currently on the market that would clearly be a good multi-generational home. And we definitely have people coming through that are multi-generation looking to live in the same home. Because people, you know, depending on where you live, aren't necessarily buying their first property in their twenties anymore. Now it's in their thirties and beyond. And so there is a shift that is occurring in terms of affordability and families are. Um, forced to get a little crea- be a little more creative and live together or, you know, decide how that's going to look. So. The the only thing I would say when we're having conversations about the fact that interest rates aren't dropping, then what I hear is then homes need to be more affordable, you know, so that we can. Uh, deal with the higher interest rate if the home price is more affordable.
I I'll let, yeah.
It it's what it's what it's what happens. I'm just saying, these are the conversations.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it is an education piece, and I think it goes back to, um. You know, so people talk about affordable housing, and they're like, well, property taxes are a huge piece, and so we need to reduce those. Well. To Sam's point, if you don't look at it as a totality, you reduce property taxes, so you reduce services. So now your insurance goes up, and you're actually behind where you were before.
And I want to cut right there and pause. Um, I was taught recently by. Um, an individual within the state of Wyoming's budget office that we need to stop using the word tax and call it revenue. In that when when we, and we did as a state, provide a twenty-five percent cut to.
Revenue.
To revenue based off of the taxes. Um, I don't mean to make light of a situation, but that's literally our own state defunding our own police and services. Um, people need to understand that none of your, none of your home, home tax goes to the state. None of it. Actually, this might be a good time for you to maybe explain where certain taxes go that people pay so that people might understand. You know, the mills they're paying, where is that really going? Who gets that money? Is it the state getting it? And they're just hogging all my cash? Does Gunner have it? And he goes golfing, you know?
No, so property taxes are local, right? Um, and that has been lost in the conversation and. And they've continually said, well, the state has all this money and the state has all this savings. And you can debate the correct amount of savings for the state of Wyoming, and and that's a separate conversation, though. Uh, what you have to discuss is how local tax dollars, how ho- property taxes fund your. Uh, Laramie County government, ten mills. If you were within the city of Cheyenne, that's an additional eight mills. Uh, so point zero zero eight of your assessed value. Uh, uh, your fire district, if you're in a rural fire district, three mills, uh, go to that fire district. And then you have two mills that we give to the library, that the county could take, but we give to our library. Um, as as a funding mechanism. And I think that. People have said, well, Laramie County has reserves. Why don't you guys just reduce your mills or give a refund? Well, I just named every local government piece that takes um those property taxes, and it's about twenty-four percent. The other seventy-six percent goes to schools. Whether it be um through your local district or to uh the state through for school facilities, but those are direct dollars that go back into our community, into our schools here. And so, uh, while I could reduce a mill or two mills for um people across Laramie County. I think effectively it would be like a thirty dollar reduction to the average homeowner for the year.
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so, but you scale that and thirty dollars per homeowner, I can employ five more deputies. That are responding to calls at your house.
Well, and to your point.
Which we all still want.
Yes.
Well, and you talked about L triple C and the advanced manufacturing center. I mean, I believe the number they gave out, or this might have been for the Serbrog Prentice Auditorium. There's a lot of construction at L triple C. It was like twenty bucks over the course of the year per resident. If your house was like two hundred fifty thousand or something, so- something moderate like that. Um, I mean, the power of quantity is what we talk about when it's like, it's thirty bucks. I'm not going to sit here and say that I don't love that my taxes went down. Of course I like that.
Sure.
You know, but I understand that without revenues, we don't get amenities and we don't have other services. Um, I kindly remind everyone that your government exists to provide services to its people. Both at a city level, a county level, a state level, and a federal level. So, yeah, you might be very happy that your taxes got cut, but what does that do to your neighbor? Or what does that do to our schools? I mean, we're already, I'm not going to get into it because I haven't followed it closely enough, but. I know there's a lot of things going on with schools in Laramie County and the closures of things. And I know that that's another sensitive topic, but but all of these. All of these things that we want in our community. I mean, people, people want fire. People want a fire truck to show up at their house.
Their their insurance company wants a fire truck.
That's actually, that's a fair point.
That's even more important, right? Because you can, you will not be able to get. A loan on a home if you cannot get insurance, you know, insurance is a requirement of a mortgage. And so. If you don't have fire service protection or fire protection available within a certain distance of you. You're not going to be able to get insurance and you will not be able to buy a home. You won't be able to sell your home to somebody because no one will be able to buy it.
Or it's similar to flood insurance where the only insurance you're going to find is so astronomical that it doesn't even make sense to to pur- to purchase the property.
Yeah.
You know, but all all of these things we need and we have to pay for.
They all affect affordability, right?
And I think that's, uh, my guess would be. If I were, if had a little crystal ball, would be that everybody wants all the things. We want all the services. We want. Um, we we want lower property taxes, but we want everything taken care of.
Right.
We want um our economy to be strong, but we also want our housing to be affordable. And I think that's the balance that we're all trying to accomplish that just at the moment. You know, maybe we enjoyed some years where we were able to have our cake and eat it too, right? Like we were able to. Afford everything that we had and we had good services. And I, you know, and maybe I'm wrong, but it does feel like. You know, especially, I mean, how long did we enjoy low interest rates? Ten years, whatever the case is, you know, so during that time, you know, there was a lot of flourishing happening. And so now that it has become a little tighter. I think people are just looking for a way to make life a little more affordable.
You know.
And still keep services would be my assumption.
My my, how quickly like we forget history, you know? Yeah, we had low interest rates. Anybody at the table want to talk about why we had low interest rates?
Yeah, we were in what was referred to as the Great Recession.
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had, I mean.
Housing market collapse.
So, I it it is wild to me that we seemingly remember, which makes sense. We remember the good stuff. We don't remember the bad stuff, but. I don't, I don't like, everyone loves that we had COVID rates, but do we remember what happened to the international market globally? I mean, the world just was shattered, you know? So we forget that portion of it, but we love the rates. We love the ten-year prosperity we had post-great res- re- great, post-great recession. But to Gunner's point, how many people were affected by that here locally?
Yeah.
You know, so we have these things, but it's it it seeming like we never learn from our past mistakes. And that we're continually going to head that way. Um, I I'm not saying that I don't believe we're going to have a housing crisis. We don't have the inventory to have a housing crisis. Um, there's.
Well, and not only that, but mortgage lenders have changed the way they lend. And so since two thousand eight, so it has made it different.
Yeah, and appraisers have kept us in check.
Yes, yes, they have.
I'd welcome a conversation with an appraiser who wants to come on. This isn't my show, though, so.
Yeah, you're invited. Appraisers are always welcome on the show. Um, well, I think, like I said, I just think the average person probably just wants all the good things. Like we all just want all the good things, but maybe don't know all the complexities behind the scenes that have to happen to make that happen.
Well, I'm going to call people out, too. They need to vote for things that maybe don't impact them, but but do, you know? I do not, I don't have children. Please tax me more for our Department of Education.
Yeah.
You know, I, you know, I I I want to pay taxes. You know, if if low tax burden and zero income tax is the greatest attraction that our state offers. We would have far more people here. You know, we we pride ourselves on being a business-friendly state. I don't really feel that way. Um, it doesn't feel that way that we're a business-friendly state because we have. A large majority of our legislative body is anti-growth, and they don't want, they don't want large-term growth. I know. Here locally, we don't want to be Fort Collins, but you ask eighty percent of Cheyenne where they went over the weekend and they go down to Colorado. Which is fine. I'm not hating on, I do it. We all do it. I'm fine with it, but just be honest. You know, be honest and say that you love the amenities and you love what you get when you go down there.
Yeah.
And maybe we want a piece of it here.
But but I guess I'm going to push back on you a little bit in that. There's a balance between growth and holding on to conservative values. And that's what, so I'll say once again, you're right, all those amenities are down in Colorado, but. When I'm helping buyers come up here, they're begging me to make sure that Wyoming does not become what has happened down there. Like, and I'm talking about people that have lived in Colorado their entire lives, decades. And they're moving up here to embrace the conservative values that are Wyoming. Because tha- that no longer exists down in Colorado in their minds. And so. What I, whenever I have worked with legislators in the past, there is a balance between growth. And the maintaining of conservative values and what does that look like? Now, I probably sit more towards the center in terms of. One of the things I really love about Cheyenne is the growth because I come from a more rural community where. The conservative values have a much stronger hold than the growth does. And what I love about Cheyenne is that in many rooms that I sit in, there are conversations about growth. And I only say that because I come from a perspective of a rural, more rural community where growth is not the interest. It's maintaining the conservative values. What I love about Cheyenne, and again, this is just an outside perspective, is that. That struggle for balance is there, like there is the um more conservative values in balancing with the growth. And I love the fact that Cheyenne has focused so much on attracting businesses, the manufacturing plants, the data centers, you know, whatever into Cheyenne. But all I can tell you is that everybody that moves here from Colorado is running from there. Now, yeah, do we like to drive down there and enjoy their amenities? We do, but we also come home safely to our little spot here in Wyoming. So that's the only thing I would say.
Yeah, and I just counter with, I hate this argument because people in Colorado complain about California, that everyone from California is apparently moving to Colorado. So then everyone in Colorado wants to move to Wyoming.
Yeah.
And do they, do they not see the irony of what they're doing? Of they are mad that someone from another state moved into their state. So what are they doing? They're moving into another state. So while I may agree or disagree with whatever conservative values are present in the state of Wyoming.
I didn't.
You're still doing, you're still doing.
I didn't recently know this about you until your recent Facebook posts. I are like comments. I was like, I didn't know half of the things you were so passionate about.
Um, I, yeah, that's not a conversation for right here, I don't think, but um, I, yeah, I. I am very passionate about people just understanding reality.
Yeah, sure.
So I I just want, I want the conversation to be clear that, okay, I'm good with people moving here. I think it's wonderful.
Yeah.
But let's be honest, that they're doing to us the same thing that California quote did to them. But they don't see it as anything, and I'm sorry, those true Wyoming right conservatives. I don't think you'd call a Colorado Republican a Wyoming Republican. The same way that Massachusetts wouldn't call a Colorado Democrat a Democrat.
Sure.
You know, you know what I'm saying? So I think that there's, I mean, everything is on a spectrum. So, okay, people want to be conservative and move up to Wyoming. I'll straight up tell you, I don't think conservative in Colorado. Except for one little person in Rifle, Colorado. He equates anything to the conservativeness of Wyoming.
And I mean, I could go on and on about this, but. My issue is, is the folks that come here, um, and say they're moving here for our conservative values because they watch the television show Yellowstone and think that's what we actually are.
That's true.
But in reality, they're populists. They're not conservatives, right? I'm, uh, you know, a lifelong Republican. Uh, grand, great grandfather was in the legislature in nineteen fifty-six. I'm the exact same kind of Republican he is, and I'd be called a rhino. Right? By by these folks moving here.
Yeah.
Because I don't want to um have state-sponsored socialism, which is giant tax breaks on residential property taxes on the back of mineral industry. Because that's what's occurring. Um, that's socialism. That's not conservatism.
Right.
And so, but to those folks, I'm I'm in the wrong.
Yeah, no, I.
But I won't go, that's that's where I'll stop.
Well, and it's also let's correctly define socialism and get people to understand that a lot of the things that we do in our life is socialistic. You know, I I'd want to point out that the favorite item of retired people is social security. That is literally socialism. Um, the idea that all of us put in collectively support, I'm all for it, but. Not trying to be rude, everyone needs to understand that's what you do at Thankful Thursday. That's what you do at Realtor Family Fund. That's what you do at the animal shelter banquet.
Well, the argument is though.
So it's just, it's just, we don't like it when it's for somebody else, but when it's for me, I'm going to be okay with it.
But the only thing I would, I guess, venture to say there, the reason why we like to give and donate is then. You are in control of where your money goes. So instead of the government.
Doling it out.
Doling it out and choosing where those businesses, which of those entities gets money, we get to choose. We get to choose where we spend our money, which.
And I love that. I think it's wonderful. I'm not against it. I, you guys know, I'm at Thankful Thursday all the time. I spend way too much money there, you know?
Well, I guess to bring this background, uh, to.
This is the point of this podcast. We don't go in a straight line.
No, we do not go, and we didn't the last time, Sam, and we're not going to do it probably the rest of these. No, it's totally good. We veer off a little bit on all of them, I think. But I, from the county perspective, I think what I'm hearing is that, um. The issues are complex. There, it's not, land availability isn't quite what we think it is. We do have to consider things like water and sewer. I feel like we hear from other states, water is a huge issue. Um, in terms of availability and how do we acc- you know, accommodate the population that we currently serve because of that. Um, financing for those projects is another thing. And then the, and then what we then brought it to was property taxes. And how those property taxes actually are on a local level. They don't, you know, that isn't a statewide thing, although it may funnel, it sounds like a little bit through the state. Am I correct?
Like it, the education piece.
The education piece, right? But essentially, those are services that go into the local area. And so. While I think that we like to think that things are very black and white, they're not. It's a whole lot of gray area. It takes everybody coming around the table to work together to make it happen. And just even this conversation, as we're talking about politics and the different viewpoints that we have. That's the great thing about um diversity. And I think diversity and listening to other people's opinions is what helps us grow. We just talked about this on one of the, was it the one with Jaden and Lucas, where we talked about if you only surround yourself with people that are like you. And you just sort of live in an echo chamber of people that are like you, how do you grow? You don't really, you know, you're just sitting still and it takes all of us coming together.
And that's why social media is the ill of our generation, right?
Sure, sure.
It allows for you to just live in your echo chamber and be like, everybody thinks this way.
Oh, and also the algorithm makes it that way. So you can't even.
Everything funnels you to just be in your.
You're like, look, everyone believes the same thing I believe, because that's what you see.
Or the exact opposite, it'll purposely put posts. That are anti or the exact opposite of what you would post because it's trying, it's trying to inflame you. And it's. If you understand it, it doesn't affect you. Every time I open Facebook, it shows me someone that I wouldn't follow. But it's like, yeah, you want me to get riled up. I'm like, no, I'm not going to do that.
Producing keyboard warriors.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's frustrating. I, before we're done, I don't know the schedule, I. I would be remiss if I didn't ask you, because everything is connected. Um, workforce specifically. I know we talked about the advanced manufacturing, but from the county perspective, from what you see. Um, from my, it's a one, we live in one giant Venn diagram of being interconnected. Um, so how can we work on our workforce? You know, this this conversation of chicken and egg. Do we provide a workforce and then get the industry, or do we need to get the industry to provide the workforce? Is it some combination of the two? And what is it that we, from your perspective, need in our community?
I'd say we're already, we're already past the point of um needing the industry to support the workforce. Because now what we've seen, back to housing prices, is electricians can go work at our data centers that we have been so successful in. Uh, generating and bringing to our community and earn more with maybe a little better working conditions or kind of, you know. Set up um out there than working for our local trades, uh, in electricians and plumbers and things like that. And so. When you have large-scale construction projects, um, with multinational companies that are, you know, just drawing money to get a project done. You lose out on then that workforce that is providing the housing piece. And so I would say, and this has been. And so I would say, and this has been a problem even before, is we need more people in the trades. Uh, more and more people, and I think we have seen a shift, uh, from this belief that, you know, everybody, everybody needs to go to college. You gotta go to college. You gotta go to college. Uh, some of the most successful people I know, my dad, he graduated high school because he was able to take two FFA classes his senior year. Like that's the only reason he was able to get enough credits is because they, they let him do that. Here in a very successful cabinet and millwork business with a high school education and the things that he learned in FFA and, and in, in the trades. Um, and I think that is true for, for many people in our community and many of the people I know that are very successful. We're not college folks. They're just hardworking people that provide a vital service. And we need to inspire the next generation to understand that. Because I think the other thing, um, to look back to social media and to society is you see these people just with tons of money all the time. You know, influencers or whatever it is, like, it's not real. Like none of that, none of that's real.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think it's just a cultural shift and, and understanding that those are respected and needed positions within your community and there's a great honor in providing those services to your community.
I wanna clarify, cause I, I take this very personally. I sit on the L triple C Foundation Board and I get frustrated when people say college is useless. It's like, I'm not saying you need to go get a four year degree, go get a master's, PhD. But I, I mean, you have to learn how to weld if you wanna be a welder.
You need a skill.
You need a skill. You need a trade. And, and community colleges across our state offer that. Our community colleges offer trade and technical programs that are also available. You can use your Hathaway Scholarship to go there. You know, we have private trade schools in our state. The quality of education is far lower than what you're going to get at a community college. I agree. My first job out of, out of college, I worked for a grant that was funded through the University of Wyoming. Uh, it was the College Access Challenge Grant. And I was placed, um, in a high school in northern Wyoming. And my job was, um, assist, you know, ninth, tenth, eleventh graders with like, you know, their classes or dual concurrent enrollment and then help those juniors and seniors with college application or trade school or military or vocational or some journeyman, you know? I, I get frustrated when I get it. No one, not everyone needs to go to college, but I wanna. You still need a skill and you still need an education. And the reason that I would always push someone that wants to do a trade to go to a community college is your father is most likely a statistical outlier where he was able to have good grammar and run a business. That is not normally the case. We see it. You know, we see it all the time. You have a mechanic that decides to go out on, 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 um, on their own. Or anybody that's working within a, a company and they decide to go off and do their own thing. It, it doesn't always, you know, so I.
Well, this is, this is what I tell anybody that's looking at school is what's the skill that's gonna come out of it? How are you gonna sustain yourself? This is what I said to my sons. When you go to school, when you, whatever it is that you're going to do, what's the skill that's gonna take you anywhere? Let's say you fall madly in love with some girl in Texas. How are you, and I do, I have sons, so this is how we talk.
Right.
What if you gotta move to Texas? Do you have a skill that can take you there? You know, whether you live in Wyoming, whether you live in Texas, whether you live in Oklahoma, whether you live in Massachusetts, whatever it is. How are you gonna be able to feed yourself and put a roof over your head? And that's what I wanna know from you. What is your skillset that's gonna come out of that? If you're gonna go to the U- University of Wyoming and get a four year degree to become a teacher, great, cause that's gonna take you wherever.
Right.
A four year degree in history is great, but what's the skillset that's gonna come out of that? Do you have the career path in mind where a, a, a history degree is going to take you? And that's the distinction that I make. And of course, the trade is gonna take you anywhere. It's absolutely gonna take you just about anywhere. So I, so what I'm hearing you say, Gunner, and I guess I wanna wrap up with this, whenever we're talking about in, in my previous life and working in prevention, the thing that we always talk about is there's balancing hope and concern. We've talked a lot about concern here today. The hope, where's the hope? So the hope is that, um, there are, um, groups of people coming together, working to figure this out. That's a number one hope. A number two hope is that there's community colleges that exist, including here in Cheyenne. Where we can train people in one or two years' time to develop the skill that's going to help the community grow.
Or less than one year. I mean, if you're just doing a certificate program, summer six to nine months, you know? And you can get in and out. The last thing I wanted to add about the community college side to those business owners that decide in the tech world to go out on their own, plumbers, HVAC, electricians, do you know how QuickBooks work? Do you know how to invoice? Do you know how to send an estimate? Do you know how to write a professional email? And I, and I know that this sounds, again, it sounds like I'm nitpicking on things. But we've all interacted with businesses where you're like, how in the world do you own this business? How are you paying? I don't understand what you're doing. I think that that trade, absolutely, but maybe go take an office class, you know? That's to me, the benefit of the community college. You're gonna get.
It's all available too.
You're going to get taught your trade. But wouldn't it also be nice to have an English class or a math class or take?
A business class where you learn about QuickBooks.
Or you learn about CRMs or, I mean, we all use some type of CRM. And those, those are things that are not easily learned.
The only, the only argument I would make really quick before we keep going is um, a lot of people that go into trades, they work with their hands. So sometimes some of those other classes are maybe outside of the scope of their interest at the moment. So my argument always is find a partner that has that skillset. A lot of really successful businesses have two people at the table that have those complementary skillsets that help them grow. So I would just make that argument really quick.
I, I understand that, but I would, I would then point out those individuals that it's not their interest. You are going to run a business, you know? My day to day job, I, I review commercial credit from across the state of small businesses. So there are things that we expect out of them.
I agree. How many husband and wife teams are out there though for this very reason?
I was gonna say like, my wife and I are polar opposites on just about everything, but it.
You make a good team though, probably.
Much more, it's gonna work out. And she's like, we need like six plans just in case.
So do you have any other, I guess, um, ideas of hope that as we're addressing this, what else do you see?
So I just see that we have, um, in my mind, the best community in the best state and the greatest nation in the world, right? And so, but I truly believe in our community and in our, uh, county. And what we have been willing to do over the last thirty years with investments in ourselves. And I think that will continue, um, even with an influx of people. I think that we, uh, will see an expansion of opportunities, uh, for skilled workforce and for people to get skilled. Um, to, to ramp up workforce. And I think that we will be able to, we will never solve the affordable housing problem. It's, it's just an ongoing thing, but I think we will make strides because there are people at the table that understand it's an issue and want to work towards solutions. The city's solutions are different than my solutions.
Sure.
But we are willing to work towards that goal together. And as long as we are willing to listen to, um, outside views, like you mentioned, in a diverse, uh, basket of kind of like problem solving, I think we can get there. But if we go in with, uh, this is what it's gonna work and this is how we're gonna do it, it just won't happen.
No, I completely agree. And I think we see it in some communities where there's just sort of one mindset that is occurring and they're not growing. Um, and Cheyenne, I think what it has going for it is a diverse group of people trying to figure it out. So, that's awesome.
Awesome.
Okay, well, to wrap this up really quickly, um, for each of you, my question is, what's your favorite thing about Cheyenne?
Uh, I'm gonna get a little bit corny here. Um, Cheyenne, while I may disagree sometimes. I know that that was kindly pointed out that I'm different than.
No, I'm just saying you are. I didn't realize that. Not in a bad way.
Oh, I, no, I, I just think.
Didn't mean it that way.
Cheyenne has afforded, Cheyenne has afforded me and others an opportunity to have a voice at a very young age. So I'm thirty six and feel like I'm getting old, which sure. But I, I've been here for eleven years. And from the moment I came back to Cheyenne, you know, part of, part of the chamber at the Business Council. Part of the Young Professionals Group, then part of Kiwanis, um, and then leadership roles within Kiwanis or at the Business Council, uh, for the Chamber or Southeast Wyoming Builders Association. Or, um, later we're discussing, we're having a conversation with Brett Kaler from WEDA and I sit on the WEDA board. Um, it, I have an opportunity that is very unique for my demographic across the nation. That I get to have a voice in a lot of conversations. And it's possible in our community because of the way that our community organizations are built. So to anybody, anywhere who says that they don't have a voice here, I laugh and say that you're just wrong. You are plain wrong. The people that say there's nothing to do here, you're playing wrong or you can't get involved. You are just wrong.
Yeah.
Um, there are, there are things that I've been able to be a part of that would never happen if I lived in a bigger city or in a bigger town or.
Or even in a smaller.
Oh, even in a much smaller town. Yeah.
The argument I would make.
Absolutely.
Cheyenne is the diversity here and just like you're saying, the ability for the different voices to be heard is unique and something I'm super grateful for too.
Hundred percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and I'd really echo a lot of, of that, like the opportunity, right? Like, so I am a recovering alcoholic, um, you know, nine years sober, uh, very vocal about that. And I'm an elected official, um, and a business owner and the managing broker of, of a company in town. Um, with all of that baggage, right? And.
I would call that life experience.
I know, but I know, and but like to soc- to society, like my goal is to make it experience and not be as baggage, right? That's why I say it because it shouldn't be anything, any, like, I'm sick, like I was sick, I'm better, like, better today, we'll see about tomorrow. But, um, like that is, I don't think an opportunity that would be presented in a lot of other communities, um, smaller or much larger. Also the access you have to people, like my phone number is three oh seven, four two one, four seven, five two. If you ever have an issue with county government, city government, uh, need to speak to a legislator, give me a call. Like I'm happy to facilitate any of that. Uh, the fact that I can see the governor on, you know, Saturday mornings at the grocery store at seven thirty.
We talk about that all the time.
Where else does that happen, you know, like, um, sit down with the former governor at, at a banquet. He's got a big old shoe in his mouth. Like that just, like that is Wyoming and that is like our.
In high school, I went to church with, with, uh, Friedenthal. And it's like.
We know instantly.
Yeah, and it's just, it's like very, very odd. Yesterday, I was at Happy Hour with a friend and, and walks the city councilman. And it's like, these are just, cause you know these people, you just know everyone and that, that access, I think we take for granted. I, I don't think people realize the effectiveness that we have here versus other communities.
You're absolutely right. We're one step removed from our governor, any of our legislators, anybody that has the ability to, um, have an impact. Here in Wyoming, we have pretty direct access to just about all of them, so.
Six degrees of, of Kevin Bacon, but there's only three, three degrees of Gunner mom.
Right?
Okay, well, I ask everyone a question also.
Okay.
Um, if you could buy real estate anywhere in the world, where would it be? What would you buy? Why? And money's no object, so you just have all the money.
I'd buy a house, um, in South Summerlin, just outside of Las Vegas on a golf course and golf every day.
Oh, that makes sense, yeah.
A few people might be joining you if you do that.
Yeah, as long as you have a guest room, that'll, that'll be okay. Uh, I don't think I'm gonna change, I'm gonna change my answer slightly from the last time you asked this.
Okay.
Uh, I'm either going to buy a brownstone on Yaki Way, which is, um, the road that Fenway Park is on. Or, uh, I would want some type of high rise condo on Causeway Street, which is right by TD Garden. So I would, I would be downtown Boston in a heartbeat.
Yeah.
Heartbeat.
I wanna go to Boston sometime. It seems beautiful.
Yeah, and I had just been there.
I can be your, I can be your, yeah, you guys were out there.
Been there when you came on.
Well, yes, and then, um, and then I was out there in November.
Around the same time.
And right around the same time that, was it like Associate NAR was having a conference in Boston? Yeah, um, I mean, unbelievable. And I believe they got to go to Fenway. I think they had a night at Fenway Park. So, did you go?
I went to NAR. We didn't have Fenway Park this year.
Okay.
Um, we did go do the tour of it and it was really cool.
Oh my gosh, yeah. People need to know, um, Kurt Goudy. Kurt Goudy's connection to the Red Sox. I'll talk about it on another one of these, but if you don't know it, look it up. It's un- unbelievable. Yeah.
Awesome. Well, thank you both for being here.
Appreciate it. Yeah, ab- absolutely.
Yep.